All right, well, welcome everybody to the Planning Commission for August 8th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Neil?
I'll second.
And second by Megan, yeah. Okay, any discussion? I figured probably not. Okay, all in favor of the agenda as stands? Aye.
Aye.
All right, now onto the approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes. We have to do this every time. Yeah, moved by Neil?
I'll second.
Seconded by Megan, okay, any discussion? I actually only had one comment on the second page of the minutes on the second to last bullet where the last sentence says riding a bike on a sidewalk is prohibited in most places. And I would probably just say many or something. I think we were just talking anecdotally about how there have been cities that do enforce that.
So it's changed most to many?
Yeah, I mean, this is very trivial, but... And then, last comment was on the last page under Other Business, the Planning Commission Meeting Schedule and Agenda, there is a note that myself, Dean, Jerry, and Lee will meet. Now I just add to determine next steps, so that there isn't any inference that we're actually just going to ourselves prioritize everything. Any other comments on the minutes?
I had nothing.
All right, well, all in favor of the minutes as stand? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I wasn't here, but aye.
Yeah, I think when it comes to minutes, we, yeah, we had this discussion last time, and I think we're good. All right, so next item is any disclosures relating to anything on the agenda tonight?
Nope.
Seeing none? All right, next is open to the public. Any comments relating to anything not on the agenda tonight? All right, so then we can move on to zoning matters, which is the form-based zoning, and we left off beginning with Section 2205 last time, so we can pick up there. And just as a reminder, we were, we have in a way just been addressing any questions that come up, especially since we have new members that haven't been through a lot of this before. The main intent, though, is to accept Brandy's changes that she had redlined before we got into the town plan, and so that we can approve an amendment with those changes that will, that include a lot of improvements. And then, once we've done that, then we can get into some of the bigger changes.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Just maybe out of order of things, but the thing that you just went over, the Select Board Planning Commission prioritization, is that related to this? Because I missed that discussion last time. Was that in relation to the form-based zoning, or is that a totally separate?
That one is related to the town plan, and we have a lot of recommended actions. And the Select Board is looking for input just around how to tackle prioritizing those recommended actions.
Okay.
And there's a lot of them, and that was by design. So we did spend some time arranging them in a priority order based on any input that we got from other commissions and from our own commission. So we have that to start with, but it was just more an exploratory thing with Jerry and Lee and Dean and I to figure out what are their priorities and how does all of that line up.
Okay, thanks.
And I imagine whatever comes out of those discussions, then we'll come back to the Planning Commission and we'll figure out what we want to do with stuff. Okay, so the, the way we've been doing this is just as in any sections, if you had any comments or anything that you want to discuss, go for it. We don't need to go through it line by line. So I'll probably just leave a lot of awkward pauses and feel free to shout things out if you have anything. I'm just looking at some of my highlights, which I think were just for my own knowledge.
Can you tell me where you're starting?
2205, which is Page 38.
Site development standards.
I imagine that would still be in the first pancake version, too. It's Page 38.
Yeah, second pancake version is in the printer.
Oh, yeah, I even said start here.
Yeah, right on. There was something in 2205.1F around the parking requirements exemptions with regard to structured parking, and maybe this is just a curiosity for me, but it was saying that, says that, let's see, "Spaces provided within the footprint of a structure containing one or more other uses, including rooftop, at-grade, or below-grade spaces, will not be limited by the maximum off-street parking requirement, provided that the square footage footprint dedicated to structured parking will be less than 50% of the total square footage footprint that would be required for surface parking." And to me, that meant that whatever your outdoor parking is, your indoor parking has to be 50% or less of that. Does that, is that how that reads, or am I interpreting that right?
Well, my note is that this is confusing, and I think what they're looking for is efficiency in the use of the space, but this has been something that got a little conversation during that project that's being reviewed right now for the three multifamily buildings. It may be possible to interpret it in a couple of different ways, but it is confusing, and so I guess the question might be, what is it that you, what should this be trying to accomplish? Because, you know, these are exemptions, are seen as exemptions, so it's supposed to be something that would be a bit of a, I think, more flexible or greater allowance than the norm? So the first part of it is, I think, fairly clear, which is that if someone is going, putting the spaces in a building, then they won't, they won't draw, they won't run afoul of the cap, which says that if you provide more than the basic amount, you have to get a conditional use approval. That part, that part's clear, right? Now, that begs the question, do you want to require it to be a conditional use when someone is proposing more?
More inside parking?
More, more parking period than what the default would be, because that's what this first part is saying, is that it will not be limited by the maximum off-street parking requirements. So there is a max, and you wouldn't normally go over that unless you had conditional use approval. But then it says, "Provided that the square footage footprint dedicated will be less than the 50% of the total square footage that would be required." So it's like you can't put, you can't put all of your parking in a structured parking setting, which is kind of weird.
That was how I read it, and it didn't sit right.
I read that, I mean, if you're going to have... If you're going to, if you're going to, you can exceed the max if it takes less than 50% of the space that the maximum parking requirement would take. So in other words, you need to go up, you need to build a garage. So I read that to say, if you want to build a garage that can accept your neighbor's cars, then it has to be on less than 50% of the parking lot area, which you would, it would require to do on a, just on the flat. It's challenging wording, but...
And that's why I said, I think it's looking for efficiency. It's looking to drive the spaces, the number, total number of spaces to be on less area, and that's what would be accomplished by the meeting that...
So it's saying that if you exceed, if you want to have more, for whatever reason, you can, but...
Can cover your whole lot with it.
It has to occur in something smaller than 50% of the footprint that normally, of the surface parking, is that the reference point?
That's what it says.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, to me, the example that...
There's an easier way to say that.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. Because the way that I read this is that if a developer wanted to, say, have fewer parking spots outside, but have a couple of levels on their basement or ground floor or whatever for parking, and then have an outdoor play area or whatever the outdoor use might be, then they could only do that if the inside spots were half of what the outside space allowed to them would be. Well, that seems inefficient.
It seems like, it's sort of like a potential revenue source, you know, I mean, to have, to be able to have parking for other, if it's needed, you know? I mean, I don't know, this seems...
Well, yeah.
But this isn't, it's not cutting down.
They're out, the regular outdoor parking they would have, right, saying that in addition they can have...
Right, but they...
So it's not saving on the outdoor space at all, right? Like, it's not creating more green space, it's just creating more parking?
I have to draw a picture to understand this.
Okay, so, yeah.
Well, if it, if you had, if you could park 100 cars on the lot, right, so that's going to be a space that's this big by this big on the one parking lot, so they're saying, you can have 150 cars on that property if you put it in three 50-car, three stories of 50 cars each.
Okay, because I read it that you could have the 100 plus 50 under the building.
That's how I was, that's how I read it, too.
I think you're right on. I think, well, I think Neil's description lines up with what I believe the intent to be.
So how could that be reworded?
So if you were, if you were a Bryce Lumber and you wanted to build a parking garage to house all the people in those multifamily buildings, which are being considered right down the road, you would have, you would, you could follow this...
Right, they could say, hey, I got a, I got a deal to work, you know, talk to the developer.
I can rent out all these parking spaces.
Right, I can help you meet your parking requirement, I'll incorporate them in my building, but the limitation is that Bryce Lumber couldn't convert its, the majority of its lot into a parking garage for a neighbor. It would have to be restricted to that 50% of the area that would be required for the surface parking. So the group could try to edit it. I could offer to look at the most recent version of the SMART code to see if there's a better way that this has been done, or an alternative code, and come back.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because, you know, if somebody has a lot that is more useful for this, it's efficient to be able to have a mechanism that allows them to share. I mean, we've got, kind of got the same, that going on right now down at the Shelburne Green, right? So...
Yeah, that's a PUD, and uses in a PUD.
Can all have common parking.
Yeah, yeah, but we're just, we're just talking about the form of the parking, so that it just, you know, that the outcome is not a sea of parking.
But this is also, it's a structure containing one or more other uses, so it can't just be a parking garage.
So I'll note that.
Something just, there is a restriction on remote parking, that that was another issue that came up. Off-street parking spaces must be located within 500 feet, that was one aspect. And so, question has come up on the, from the DRB, whether or not some of these numbers make sense in a corridor that is, in places relatively undeveloped? You know, that getting within 500 feet of some locations in the corridor, and then there's another one that I've got a note for later. Did the number 500 seem low to anyone?
Which section?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at 2205.1C, the parking location, remote parking, and where it says under A, off-street parking spaces must be located within 500 feet. So this is where, so if you are giving an incentive for someone under 2205 to basically provide parking for their neighbor, the corridor's maybe not quite dense enough to be sure that it would be within 500 feet? So like you were saying, you know, depending on where it's located on the Rice lot, it might not quite be within 500 feet. Is that number too low?
It doesn't strike me as low for a...
Remote parking area.
I mean, I could see that there might be some unique cases for that, but as a, in a, in general, I mean, when we say off-site, on-site, does that mean on the lot?
Yeah, a lot of these things are based on the lot, but the...
So off-site would be within a 500-foot range of the actual lot line?
Yeah, well, this here, it's measured from the nearest point in the parking area to the nearest point of the entrance.
So that's like a tenth of a mile.
That's a bit more.
Yeah, so, I mean, people, people generally, the pedestrian shed is normally considered a quarter of a mile, right? Like, that's a five-minute walk, so something kind of maybe in-between might, might be, be good. I mean, that 500 feet seems a little onerous.
Well, I'm actually glad you brought it up, then, because I didn't really read it that way. I wasn't thinking about off-site being off-lot, because if you're saying that it's off-lot, and then you're also putting in the constraint that it's the nearest part of the parking area to the nearest point of the primary entrance, that seems to defeat the purpose, I think.
Or it assumes something's a lot more densely developed than what we have here.
Right, I mean, that would be fine if you're on a small, small lot with a building doing its thing, but if you're on a larger lot, then, then the front door is right in the middle of it, you're, I mean, your 500 feet could be within your lot.
Yeah.
Which, I don't understand why that would be there.
You said this came up in the DRB?
Well, it came up in conversation with Revvy, and so I may be imputing it to the DRB, but it came up in the context of that application.
It seems like, it's like a Shelburne store sort of situation, right, where there's only like four spaces, which are really inconvenient right in front of the store, but you could park in front of the restaurant next door, right? Which maybe is 500 feet, but like, that's it. When I read it, I thought the number was very low also, and I have, and I, I wonder if what is important is, has a zoning regulation, which is to say, it wouldn't, I mean, just good business sense, leave that person, that business owner, to determine whether that's a reasonable 500 feet, or 1,000 feet, or 2,000 feet is okay for that particular customer. I mean, maybe if they're a bicycle store, that's okay. I mean, that place that's, there's a surf shop that just opened up on the, on the, on the bike path in Burlington, right? And you got to actually, you got a bike there, you can't park there. I don't know.
Yeah, I, well, this is just starting to spark a lot of questions, and particularly with other discussions that we've had, like, there have been issues raised with that there's not enough parking along the, we call it the parade church street, for the farmer's market, for example. And my argument was that the Shelburne Market parking lot has plenty of spaces, and you could walk, and that's within 100 yards, and this is more than, I mean, 500 feet is more than 100 yards. So to me, it's, if people weren't willing to park at the Shelburne Market lot and walk that short distance, then I don't see how a business would be successful with that mindset in this day and age to have remote parking. This doesn't strike me as a community that's going to be walking that far, even though I would like it to be, and I know you would as well.
My, my question is sort of has a, has a zoning regulation, is, should we be determining that? Should the town be saying, you will not be successful if you have parking more than 500 feet away, so we're going to require you not to? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, it kind of strikes me as...
Feels heavy-handed, but...
Well, I guess what's, does anyone know what the goal was of these specific, was it to help the businesses, or was there a different zoning?
I think part of it maybe in the, sort of the bracketed, the part of the sentence is bracketed under customers, it's, you know, it's to prioritize pedestrian access, rather than, you know, what we have now, which kind of prioritizes vehicular access. So, but this kind of seems like it's, you know, the assumption is made that pedestrian access is a function of vehicular access somehow.
I'm trying to run through some case studies, and when I think of, we don't, we don't have something as large as the hospital, obviously, but you have the hospital that has remote parking miles away, and they bus people in. Like, to me, if you need, I mean, the fact that we're separating customers and employees, look at the Teddy Bear Factory, they have, they have employee parking that is further away from their customer parking, but that's, that's not greater than 500 feet, I don't believe. So I'm just trying to think of, under what circumstances would this apply?
Well, I think that, keep in mind, is that it's still embedded in this regulation, even though it's a little more flexible with regard to parking, is this notion that in some places, there's, there should be a minimum amount of on-parceal parking that is not on the street. So if you, if you adhere to that idea, that if development is going to occur of a certain type, it needs to have parking spaces on the site close to it, that some minimum number will be needed, this section says, "Or on another lot nearby," because the, the town would otherwise suffer some kind of negative effect if there wasn't provision for that minimum number of spaces. Because you can, you can, the DRB could allow that number to be dropped lower and lower, and I guess the thing is, is like, if they could, you know, if it's a difference between 150, the, the DRB might attach pretty strong, pretty significance to those 50. If it's cut it from 100, they may say, yeah, 50 will really be needed, and so they can't be too far away, but we would allow them to be on a neighboring property. So that, that's what I think it's about, is it's, it's adhering to this idea that a developer should have access to a certain number, minimum number of parking. But more and more places are saying, no parking requirement, the business person's going to make a decision about how much parking they need, and they won't go into a location where they can't have enough parking.
What is, what's the concern? Why does the town need or feel, why has there historically been a need to require a certain number of parking spaces?
Yeah, well, so, in some cases, I mean, I'm, I'm going to speak more, I guess, as someone who's heard a lot of board members talk about this, the parking burden will be borne by someone else. So if you think in a more residential area, if a new residential development is approved, the people that move into that new development may park in other people's parking areas, or, you know, they'll jam up the street, or things like that. Or, if we look, if we pick on the farmer's market, we say, well, they could use the parking spaces that are privately owned by the Shelburne Shopping Park. Well, reminder, that's not a public parking area. The people that operate those businesses are the ones paying the rent on that, and they may just decide to post signs that say, "No parking for the farmer's market." So it's this idea that, you know, there is, there is a need in times to have that, those spaces close to the use, if you don't, if you aren't in a place where a lot of people can make the trips on foot, by bike, transit.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there are, there are widely varying views. I mean, Dick was someone, I'll pick on Dick, because Dick always felt it was really important to have the parking. He felt like even waivers for individual businesses caused problems because they would go away, and if someone else moved in, they didn't have the same parking demands that they would be imposing a burden on a surrounding area.
Yeah, I think it is important, I guess, just when I think about the 500 feet, this is all completely dependent on the, the lot size in question, and the building in question, and all of that, but it strikes me as you're, you're most likely going to have to have an interest in the lot next door to be able to stay within those distance ranges.
Yeah, you'd have a town, an agreement of some sort, right.
I'm not, I'm, you know, generally speaking, in favor of all the requirements here, the regulation, the notion, it's the, the number I struggle with. I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't want to plant my stick in the mud here, but, but I think it would read just fine, just saying, without the locate within.
Yeah, I guess the argument I...
Must be 500 feet of the primary entrance of the, of the building? Is that...
Sorry, I mean, without, without the reference to the, to the distance, which is to say that three on its own, remote parking stands on itself, and then A and B would just go away, and C would remain.
I think that, I'm okay with that, it just, it, you know, we're transforming, provides a lot of flexibility about how this place that's very auto-centric right now can transform over time, which I think is, that's what I want to encourage to happen. And, you know, some people are going to be more enthusiastic about, you know, going for something, depending on what their business model is, going for something that's maybe what we would call more urban in terms of a built outcome. Other people are going to, you know, want to maybe do something that's kind of more transitional, and I think both of those things are okay. You know, the whole point is to just encourage economic development. So I think to, to provide the framework for the principles, you know, that we generally want this area to be more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly, is, is enough, and then, and not worry so much about the degree to which that is achieved on a particular project. I just don't want to turn it into this do or die thing. Is that, what do you guys think?
I like the idea of just removing A and B, because if circumstances come up and it needs further discussion, we could do that, but this, to me, just seems like it might inject more complexity than necessary.
Yeah.
Because if you don't have that distance range, somebody could have an agreement with somebody a mile away, if that works for that business, if they've got a shuttle or something. I don't even know that we would get to that point, but...
Yeah. Well, and the other thing is, things are just changing so quickly. I mean, you know, I mean, who knows what people are going to be using to get around in? It's not necessarily jet packs. Yeah, I mean, really, it's like, it's changing really pretty quickly, so...
Any, any considerations around just striking those in general, like, that you can think of for needing them?
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, there could be that outlier that does want to game it and use, you know, say, oh, yeah, I got a deal with a farmer in Charlotte.
But C, C would still stand.
Yeah, well, there would have to be a contract, but I guess the, the question would be, is that, is that, because remember, this is about those spaces that really we think are needed on the site.
But this is addressing remote parking.
Right, but the, the remote parking is a way to address the required parking spaces.
Oh, so...
So it's that idea that you have that core, and...
I would, I would worry, sort of, based on your explanation of why you need spots, if there was a shuttle somewhere, and there was a neighborhood right next door where you could easily park, people would park in that neighborhood instead of going and taking the shuttle over and use, and would be causing the problem that you were describing the town might be worried about? So that's the downside I see. I think this is complicated with this, but I don't know what the right number of feet would be.
My take was not that, that there wasn't something valid in the idea, it's just that the numbers were too low. And, you know, Kate made reference to a quarter of a mile, you know, changing 500 to 1250 or something like that. That, to me, makes a bit more sense than 500, which seems kind of low in the context of Shelburne and Shelburne Road. But, I don't know, going to drop them entirely, the only argument, I guess, against that would be that this says they may be permitted, you can meet the required parking requirement as long as you have the agreement, the contract, and that's where the deal with the farmer in Charlotte could come in, where you're asking yourselves, well, is that really meeting it? I don't think so.
Well, I think that, you know, Megan's example of the neighborhood is, is, I think that's, that's a great way to look at it. That would be the, an outcome that we would not want to have. So maybe a middle ground is to just bump up those numbers, you know, to, let's say, 1,000 and 1,500 respectively. I mean, does that, is that a starting point for thinking about this?
To me, the reaction was that the numbers were low, and that's, that's what I had heard.
But just based on, now that you're, you're having some experience with applicants who are trying to apply this, does, does that seem like a number that would work in, not, I don't, I'm not thinking of spot zoning, but just as representative sites that are, you know, might, might be typical of other develop, redeveloping properties? Does 1,000 and 1,500 seem, you know, doable?
Yeah, I, I think those are an improvement over 500 and 700.
Would, do you think there are, do you suggest going higher, or...
Well, my, my thought was, you know, the, the traditional 1250. So 1250 and 1,500 maybe?
Sure, I mean, I'm cool with that. Okay.
I'd go on with that.
I'm indifferent. Yeah.
I mean, it's funny, because that example that Megan just gave makes me think of Shelburne Museum concerts, right? Where there's a concert going on there, but all those streets nearby.
Might have.
Right, including mine, I mean, they come double within a mine, which is far more than a quarter mile.
Yeah.
Anyways.
So you said 1250 is a traditional number?
A quarter of a mile, that's, you know, kind of a rounded surrogate for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe just sticking on... And maybe just sticking on the, the topic, this, this will come up again in a couple of pages where there's something that talks about when you have a parking garage requiring leasing to businesses within 700 feet. We'll get there in a minute. Again, the number seems low.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna belabor this, but I'm curious. Special events make sense, like concerts and that sort of thing, and people parking in neighborhoods, and they're gonna do that anyway, 'cause, I mean, they do offer parking on-site, people just don't wanna get stuck in traffic. So I don't think that this is the kind of thing that this would be addressing. This is talking more about businesses that have customers and employees. And I would almost read this as, are we trying to prevent the developers or the, the people that are putting that business in that place that doesn't have enough parking for it, or are we trying to protect them from themselves so that they retain the customers that would not go if they don't have a place to park? I think that's how I'm looking at it. I, I just, I don't understand what the specific use case is.
So a situation where someone who's got a business idea, and it's going to generate more parking than the site can support, and you would think if they're rational actors, they're not gonna choose that location.
And I get that we can't rely on rationality anymore, but...
Right, but that might be the, the situation. But if that's the most affordable place to rent, and they're convinced that their idea's gonna work, and they're gonna make it fly until they, you know, as, as long as they need to, and that's the one place they can rent, that's what they're gonna rent, and they're gonna be telling people it's all gonna be fine.
I mean, I, I'm just thinking from a planning development perspective, I assume this would be applicable, the, the new building that went up in the Five Corners area, when they just really developed that block. And they had, they had some retail space in the bottom there, and my understanding was that there really wasn't a whole lot of parking. And sure, you get a lot of cars driving by, but there's not a whole lot of parking. So some prospective tenants that, that I was in contact with around that space, they looked at it and said, well, in the end, we couldn't make it work, 'cause the rent was too high, and we wouldn't have the traffic, 'cause even though there's lots of people, there's nowhere for them to stop.
Yeah.
And so they didn't do that. And I feel like that would just be a, a factor in the development process, is ensuring that there would be enough parking for whatever prospective tenants they would want to rent to. And maybe not.
Yeah, and this is where people have the idea that, you know, there's enough demand for the space that someone will move in and customers will adapt, and yet, they go, they build the space. And I looked over at Mary Ann, because she drives by that who-knows-how-many times a day. But, you know, some people will try it, and they try to lease the space, and it doesn't get picked up. So colliding worldviews. Or then there's that person that decides they're gonna gamble, and that people might or might not keep the business afloat, but...
Yeah, I'm getting, I mean...
How does the group wanna go?
I mean, it's an interesting point, because, I mean, we don't want to, we want to protect the town from empty storefronts also, right? Which is to say, if they build something like that, and it doesn't get filled, because the business, the would-be business owners perhaps are smarter than the developer, right? Or have different perspectives than the developer, then that's a problem, too.
Kinda like, yeah, I don't, the whole stick-in-the-mud thing, I don't...
The 1250, the 1250 works for me.
I don't feel that strongly about it, I'm just curious, yeah.
I guess I also see a benefit to forcing people to consolidating parking if they can't. So rather than just building and thinking it'll figure it out, they have to work with other store owners to find. And having fewer parking lots...
And that's in...
Is, seems like it would be beneficial to the general...
Yeah, and I'm also trying to think of how we're factoring all this other stuff in, like, this is, this is form-based zoning for the corridor, and there are provisions to say that if you have adjoining, like, partner businesses have lots next to each other, they need to be joined at the parking lot, that kind of thing. So I, I just, it, it's almost like the, the property at the former Champlain Lanes. Like, we, we have these ideas, and it's great, until a developer comes in and says, okay, this is, this is what the lot looks like, and what we can do with it, and what your rules say, and it doesn't make sense. So I'm, I guess I'm just kind of looking at it from that perspective. How can we be open and allow, allow that process to just work? And I just, I'm, I'm not thinking of any examples, that's not to say that there wouldn't be any.
But I think that's a fine example, that particular lot, it's Champlain Lanes. I mean, if, if they couldn't figure out how to do their parking there on-site, and if they went to the hotel next door, and the hotel said, oh yeah, we got 30 spaces out back that we're not using, we have too many.
And in that case, that might be further than 500 feet.
They could enter into an agreement, and use the spaces over there to, to park some tenants, some residential tenants.
Sure. All right, so we'll just, so we'll change the 500 and the 700 to 1250, and...
Yes.
Call it good? All right?
1250, uh, 1250 first, 15 is what I'd heard the second. Five to 20, 1250, 700 to 1500 is what I thought you were saying, but maybe is it 1250 in both?
Uh, 1500's fine. It's good, more walkers. Anything else on this page?
I just observed that, I, I found the maximum parking space requirements interesting. 2205.1E, the maximum number of off-street parking spaces must not exceed 100% of the minimum parking requirements. It just seems like a lot of words to say, the required parking spaces is this. No?
Wait, let's, exceed 100% of the minimum?
That means it's required, that the number of parking spaces is this. It's not a minimum, it's not a maximum, it's just, it is.
That's for off-street parking? What, so they're factoring in street parking for the range between min and max?
They're saying that you can't have more than you would have under the, underlined zone.
Default zoning.
Yeah.
So if you wanted, I mean, I think you could possibly edit it to say, must not exceed the parking requirements specified in Article 9, Section 1960.1 through 14. Is, it's the, the 100% of the minimum, or...
The 100% of the minimum trips me up.
Yeah. Or just, how about just must not exceed parking requirements?
But isn't there a higher maximum under that article?
No, 'cause those are, 'cause in the, the conventional zoning, it's minimum off-street parking requirements.
Okay. Sorry.
Oh, well, so then, if there is no range, then...
That's not how it, not, it's not how it works in that section. I can double-check, but...
Well, I mean, if it's not, then to Neil's point, it would just be, must not exceed the parking requirements as specified, instead of saying exceed 100% of the minimum.
Just one more thing to wrap your head around.
Or maybe...
I wish I had an encyclopedic mind to just know exactly what that section said.
Yeah, I can do that.
It's right here. Let's see, that's my encyclopedic mind.
Behold. And while that's coming up, just since we do have an audience, is there a particular section or anything that you're interested in? I think, Don, I saw an email that...
I didn't know if you had addressed that already, so I...
I don't think so. I made a, actually made a note wherever that was.
The stormwater comment?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten there yet.
And Dean, he answered my main concern, which was, uh, he answered that the regulating plan shows the disappearance, withdrawal of the proposed road off of Webster Road that nobody in the neighborhood wants.
Gotcha.
And, so that's on, and that the other drawing that still shows it is just an example.
Okay.
How far ahead is the stormwater? Should we, since you're here, make sure that we get to that today, so you don't have to...
There will, yeah.
'Cause it's a little bit ahead, isn't it?
I know, I made a note in here, but it's gonna take me a while to find it. 2205, it's in this section.
It is, okay.
I'd like to just say, I thank you and commend you for your thoughtful, such thoughtful discussion, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Even though there's no outward sign of that.
[laughing]
For you.
And we have two openings.
I was gonna say, we're putting on a good show to try and convince you to join.
You can't get enough, you know? Come on up.
It's all about the parking regulations.
Exactly.
I did have a question just come up from the discussion, which was, if you had a joining property, uh, joining businesses that own a shared parking, it seems like it's an opportunity, and I don't know if this is addressed, and that, to have less ins and outs on the...
Yes, um, that, exactly, that's one of the, 'cause that increases the pedestrian friendliness, is to have fewer curb cuts. But it also hopes, hopefully minimizes, you know, the stormwater, just all, all the impacts that that creates, yeah. So we'd like to unpave as much as possible, and then, and, you know, plant it up, or build on it, you know, so. Recognizing that not all areas of the corridor are, you know, suitable for that kind of urbanization, it's, it's kinda, it's interesting to watch it sort of naturally start to concentrate, you know, in the, the, at the Long Meadow, you know, intersection, because of, of what's already there, and, and, you know, that's Lordan, healthy living, and, you know, so...
And the healthiest livings they have is gonna be such a greater need for the pedestrian.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
And I really appreciate your emphasis from the beginning on the character.
Yeah, well, what we'd really like to do is, is encourage the character of the village to sort of trickle out towards that area, so that we can kind of expand and replicate the character of our village, rather than the opposite approach, which is, you know, like, like this, you know, to...
Big box stores.
Yeah, coming right to our, our borders, yeah, so...
How is this introduced, Dean? This is...
The stormwater's kind of far back.
The references to C1 through 14, or whatever, is that right?
Gotcha.
I don't know if we can skip, maybe he wants to come up.
C1 through 14.
Yeah, so, that's what I was showing you, that, that part C is part of a section that looks like that.
So, or is C1 through 14 of those minimums or maxims? Or just, they're just...
I think that they're just numbers.
Numbers.
Well, these are, so, yeah, so, da-da-da-da, so this is where, provided with a minimum number of year-round off-street, blah, 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 as set forth below. So it is, these are, as this bylaw is applied, those are the minimum requirements.
So by, we can safely take out 100% of the minimum and, and not lose the meaning?
Well, this is, this is talking about maximum, this is, 2205.1E is saying the maximum surface parking requirements must not exceed...
These numbers.
These numbers.
It's because it's, it's a different worldview.
Yeah.
It's saying, you can have parking on-site, but don't have too much. And it's, it's taking what had been a minimum and saying, it's a maximum.
So if we, if we just reference C1 through 14, is that exclusive of A, where it says these are minimum requirements?
Well, the reference is, now I need to get my...
Well, 'cause now this language makes a bit more sense.
It does, no, I find that also, but now I'm wondering...
It's painful to say, oh, this makes sense now.[1406.51][1406.51][laughing] Now explain it to the next developer that walks up and says, what's the deal?
That isn't one of the parts that have caused confusion, that, but, so now you're liking the current wording better?
Well, never said I liked it.
Uh, yeah, I would say I don't like it, but it makes sense now.
I mean, what's, what's strange about this is C appears to stand on its own, because it's not, it's, because it's in parallel with A, right? But A says minimums is outlined below, well, below is C.
So these would be minimums.
So then these would be minimums, but the way that this references is it says...
They're minimums here, but they're maximums in form, in formism.
The requirement specified in 1961C through 14.
I am not a lawyer, but I would say, if, if we're comfortable with this, I would worry that someone could say, if we took out the 100% of the minimum and just said, meet that, then you could say, well, that says at least, so I can go over...
Say you could have as many as you want, right? And therefore the language...
That if, if this isn't terribly objectionable, I would lean towards leaving it like this to make sure that we get what we're going for. But I am not an attorney.
I agree with that, it still makes my head spin, though.
I guess Dean and Ravi can explain it to applicants.
You know, like I said, it's, it isn't one of the things that I, I'm aware people have struggled with, okay?
And then with that, you could still have up to whatever the, whatever 50% of those maximums are, you could have inside, right? Based on our previous discussion.
Yeah, it's not a common feature.
And then you can get in offset with another lot, or, oh, okay.
All right, moving on.
Tangled web. Do we, Megan made a good point that Don's, Don's question is a little later in this section. I don't know what your time is like, I'd like to be mindful of it, 'cause it might take us a while to get to that spot.
So Don's comments have to do with 2205.3B and what goes from there, specifically, still in that column, applicability. And I'm gonna pull up Don's, actually, this, Don's comments are printed, right?
Mm-hmm. And that's why it didn't make sense, 'cause it's 3B.
Yeah, we're talking about page Roman numeral 2245?
Yep.
And if you wanted to jot notes, you could jot half an acre next to A, less than 3,000 square feet next to B, and then below that, well, maybe that's the first place to start, because those are the current requirements, half an acre and less than 3,000 square feet, and not putting words in Don's mouth. The half acre, he feels should be changed to a quarter acre.
Oh, I see.
Right?
And this is for any new development or redevelopment?
Right, and that's where the subsequent paragraphs would help in understanding what me, what you do when it's redevelopment. So this is where in B, you need to change things by more than 3,000 square feet for it to be triggered. So if the combination of new and redeveloped is less than 3,000, then you, you get out of that. So a small, less than 3,000 square foot modification or new exempts you from the half acre, basically. And then below that is even more detail, but, I mean, Don, do you wanna talk about this more? Use the mic, please.
I was just thinking, since rain falls everywhere, producing the half acre to a quarter acre spreads the burden to more properties, so try and get more, more opportunities also to clean the stormwater and clean our natural resources. It's basically what I was trying to get at.
Did you have any thoughts on the 3,000 square feet? Or do you think that was reasonable?
Again, the direction would be, you know, the more you can pull people into helping to process the stormwater, the, the better. So just trying to raise a flag and see where you guys might go on to.
So for discussion, we'd be talking about, I mean, part of me thinks that if there's gonna be any kind of new development or redesign, it doesn't really matter what the size is, it should take these considerations into, or take these best practices into consideration. It may not always be practical, and I don't know if that's what creates a little gray area with DRB approvals and that sort of thing. But given the emphasis that we've put on stormwater in other regulations, and how important that topic is, it strikes me as, that should be our default, is to manage it, regardless of size. And thinking of case studies with half acre, or, well, I mean, this is on a property, and it's talking about impervious surface.
this is on a property and it's talking about impervious surface where it exists or will exist. If you're going to be developing that or redeveloping it, it would strike me that you would want to do it in a way that protects drainage and has best practices, is that unreasonable?
There's a cost, I mean, the issue is, I think fundamentally, there's a cost associated with having to, and it's, society might say, yeah, you should be bearing that cost, but the developers, and I'm remembering the focus group meeting that we had downstairs, you know, they were saying things like, well, aren't the state rules and requirements enough? If you make us do more than the state requirements, then you might make us choose another location. So it may be that you have to think about the possibility of this requirement being a disincentive. I'm not saying don't do it, but some developers might say, you've taken my interest in develop, redeveloping a site in the corridor and you've lessened it because it's going to be a more difficult project.
But it's going to create longer-term issues that end up being borne by the taxpayer anyway.
Yeah.
Well, what do we require on the underlying zoning for stormwater, just the state, you just have to comply with the state?
Yeah, already the, right, this, this is more strict than what has been required. And Don's idea is to make it still more strict.
Right, right.
And what I was attempting to show in the second page was a map to illustrate, well, what, how much difference might it make in terms of parcels and where would they be if you dropped the amount, because, so this is just looking at lots that have more than a quarter acre of impervious surface and more than, or those between, so you'd pick up 20, maybe 20-ish. There are 20 lots right now that have between a quarter acre and a half acre of impervious surface. So if we imagine that someone was going to do some kind of redevelopment and they were going to be adding a bit more pavement and redeveloping, so something on the order of 3,001 feet of more pavement or impervious surface, they would be subject to review, whereas right now they are not, because it would be too small. That's just, it's ballpark, it's ballpark.
I, I have to say, because, you know, the goal is to incentivize people to use this form of development, which is so superior from an environmental standard standpoint, from an economic standpoint, from a quality of life, you know, bike, bike ped, all of those, through those lenses, in my opinion, I would not be in favor of making the, the standard harder in, in that, within that type of zoning and, and not changing it in the, in the underlying type of zoning. So it's either like we do it in both or we just leave them at the state level, that would be my position. Because I don't want to give anybody a reason to, you know, just go in and, you know, do the, all the stuff you can do right now, develop a greenfield, you know, and I want them to, I want to incentivize reuse of these small lots. So I would, that would be my position, that we either do it for both or we just stick with the state rules for now and we can always change it later, you know, if this thing takes off.
I think that sounds reasonable, I mean, maybe we could change the language to something saying whatever we said here or the, or the underlying standards, whichever is more stringent, because it seems to me that a quarter of acre is still a lot of impervious surface and we're dependent on the lake, like, long-term, the health of the lake, our runoff is in our best interest, so I think it's a good point that you don't want to discourage people from using the more stringent standards, but it seems like this is maybe raising a concern that both should be addressed and looked at.
I just feel that the, the, the underlying zoning, encouraging use of that will be far more impactful over the long run in terms of emissions, in terms of all the stuff we care about and, and need to address. So, you know, I'm, I'm, that's, that's my concern is, is if we can get them to use this, there, that's already a lot better than what the current default is.
Yeah.
Just plain field to be leveled.
You need to incorporate stricter standards in the default regs because these are more strict and people are going to be disinclined to use these and they'll say, ah, I'm going to use default. So I think what I heard you say though is, and this idea isn't new, it's been mentioned before, that if you were amending this to have a tougher number, let's say, you also need to get everybody on board to make the default regulations more strict.
Which I think is absolutely appropriate to do because, you know, we're, we're, as a town, I mean, I, I don't know what the current, you know, sort of national debt calculator is, but, you know, at, at one point, you know, there was in excess of $8 million that, you know, we were, we were, taxpayers were going to be on the, you know, having to pay over time to comply with the MS4 and, and, you know, just the requirements of the stormwater. So, so this is, you know, this is going to affect everybody's bottom line, so, so I think if we're going to do it, we should, we should do it across the board and I think, you know, it's, it's worth exploring adding that to the default zoning.
I would agree, I think it's worth, I think it's beneficial for the town.
And it would be consistent too.
I certainly agree with that. In principle, I just, I'm having a hard time understanding how much of a cost this would add. I mean, we're, we're talking about, and I'm thinking in terms of, I have a gravel driveway, so, and I live on a hill. So if I wanted to pave that and I didn't have any consideration around what happens with the water and the water, let's say I'm an idiot and I design it so that it's concave and water just funnels right down and gets to the road and contributes to all that stuff and all of the runoff that it picks up. The opposite of that would be to include some drainage in that driveway design, which would not contribute to that additional drainage and would enable water to infiltrate. We were, we're talking about, and again, it comes down to what are the, what are the types of, of projects that we're talking about? Because a half acre, 3,000 feet, that could be, that could be building, I don't know, parking lot, driveway, it's just paving spaces generally, right?
When you talk about making it the requirement in the default regulations, townwide or within the stormwater overlay district? And we can throw the map up of what that means, or some other area? Because the more of Shelburne that you would propose to be subject to this, then I think the less likely it is that it would ever be adopted because people will say, you know, here's a project I did and I didn't have any stormwater requirements and you're going to tell me that I've got to then go through all this and, not that they shouldn't do it or that it wouldn't benefit the environment, but I think that there could be a lot of, a lot of resistance to it. So do you mean townwide or do you want to start with townwide and your backup position is the stormwater overlay district or maybe the mixed-use district?
I was thinking just the mixed-use district, just so that there's parity between the form-based overlay and the underlying zoning in the, I was thinking just in the mixed-use district, yeah, and that just seemed more doable and, and, you know, because, because this pertains to that specific area of land and so do the underlying zoning.
You know, Automaster recently, you know, they, Automaster's got, I don't know, one, two, three different stormwater permits applying to their property, they recently added space that is on the order of half an acre of impervious surface. So let's just assume that they aren't governed by the current regs, but they would be governed by this. I think you'd probably hear from them and there would be expressions of concern because they would say, but look, we have these one, two, three state permits that all say we're doing a good enough job and how are we going to retro, even if we want to, how are we going to retrofit those stormwater features so that they do more than the things that.
That's assuming that anybody that's already done a project would have to go back and apply these laws, which that never happens. It's grandfathered at that point.
But if they, if they were, so in the case of Automaster, Automaster, they were adding half an acre or just under half an acre. So they would be not subject to the form-based zoning as it's written now, but if we make a level playing field and it's a quarter acre, they would be subject to it. So it would be an existing developed site that's creating more than a quarter acre of impervious surface that would be more than 3,000 square feet, so there would be an implication in terms of stormwater manager, management as a result of this change.
So we would be making them non-compliant with the zoning and that's what we, the effect would be to make them not compliant anymore? Because wouldn't our local rules, they would have to meet the state rules, which sounds like they do, and then they would also have to meet our local rules on top of that, so we would be making them non-compliant.
But wouldn't.
With our local rules, right?
Any, anytime we, we put in a new regulation, anything that is in place at the time of that regulation going in is, it's grandfathered. It's not like people have to go back and do anything, this is what I'm not understanding.
I'm struggling with it too. So this is, this is saying these regulations apply to any land development within the overlay district where one half acre or more exists or will exist, so they're already over half an acre. They've got lots of impervious surface, so we know that that threshold is crossed. And then we know that it's going to be many times greater than the 3,000 square feet. But let's just assume that they didn't have much impervious already, they would have a site that has the state permits in place and they think that that's enough, and then there would be this that says, well, that new area that you want to pave, you've got to meet these requirements for just this area. So it's going to take teasing apart with the areas that are governed by the state permit and the areas that are governed by this local permit, and how will that work? I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they could overlay, but we're saying they have to have a additional treatment for some area that the state might not say, I, I don't know, but it's going to be more complicated and I don't know that it's going to be well-received, not that you shouldn't try to do it, but.
Are there any examples in the state where you have more stringent, a town imposing more stringent?
South Burlington has done it, although I think they did it across the board. So I, I think that, I think that they did it across the board and so that you didn't have that choice.
And Westford does too. It's not, it's not a great fit, actually, to be more, to be tougher than the state. It's, it's, it's tough from an enforcement standpoint.
I heard Heinzberg has gone more strict as well.
I really want to say stuff and I'm not sure if, if I should, but I feel like we're, we're also in a time where it's, how serious do we want to take these things?
Yeah.
And, and I understand that there's a balance between ensuring that progress can happen and not have people say, all right, well, then we're just not going to do anything. But there are examples of exceeding a higher authority. I mean, there are towns and states that have adopted the Paris, Paris agreement that our federal government has not. And I would say that there are probably several places where the, where our state's regulations don't go as far as they probably should if we are to meet the things that people say we want to meet. I guess that's where I'm coming from. A good, good example with Automaster, and I, I just want to understand how that makes things more complex because the, the idea to me is if they wanted to add on an additional parking lot, which is the impervious surface, and how does that tie back into all of the other stuff that they've gotten and that the state said that they were fine? The, the reality is they're building a new lot and the rules would apply to that new lot. Of course, it would be ideal if everything was all one big happy system and integrated and that sort of thing, but nobody would be saying things have to be integrated that way, it's just you need to make sure that the infiltration from that lot happens and it doesn't run off and go somewhere else in excess of whatever our stormwater metrics are. Which to me, that doesn't seem like that would be enough for them to say, well, then we're not going to build that parking lot because in their case, they want to have cars on their lot.
Is the way that this, if, if you're Automaster and you're building that, that new lot, when they calculate the stormwater and they make the stormwater calculations, do they have to take into consideration all of the existing impervious surfaces? Or are they just focusing on, we're doing this half an acre?
Yeah.
So we're just worrying about how do we treat this half an acre of stormwater?
So, Automaster, I mentioned it first because they have done a project recently or in the process of doing a project and it's fairly substantial, but it's probably not a good example because they already have these permits in place and when they got them, they had already anticipated these improvements and so they've designed systems. So it's probably not a good example, the examples maybe that we should be using are just imagining that in the corridor there are about 20 parcels that have roughly, you know, half an acre of impervious surface between a quarter and a half. And right now, chances are that they've got no stormwater management, chances are. And will this make a dent if, if it's 20 and we just assume that it's half an acre? That's 10 acres of impervious surface, well, that's, that's a pretty substantial area, so you would want to do something about those. And I guess the question might be, is someone going to be disinclined to do anything because they feel like they're going to be spending a lot of money to put in the stormwater management that people feel that they should do, or are they just going to say, ah, forget it, not business-friendly or whatever?
And so, I mean, and I'm happy to look at it from a money perspective as well, if there's somebody that could say, yes, by adding, adding stormwater infrastructure to repave, to adding some impervious surface, what does that add to a project? I mean, if we're, if it's a minimal thing, the long-term cost is going to be a lot more than that minimal thing. If it doubles the cost of the project, okay, I understand that discussion, I'd be really encouraged to, I'd be interested in having it because I want to understand it, but it doesn't strike me as adding provisions for ensuring that water gets infiltrated is worth just saying, yeah, we, we don't want to do this because it might limit somebody from doing a project.
Would this maybe be somewhere where we could add in something about a waiver for existing properties? Because if it's, if we're looking at, you know, the potential of one or two properties having a big concern, it seems like a waiver for a few properties with an overall more stringent.
Well, but the, the waiver is kind of built into the part C when it says how much of the site needs to be basically controlled, the runoff has to be controlled, because if you are doing less than 50% of the impervious surface, you only have to worry about what's new or different. So if you're doing like a small area, you don't have much of a burden, but if you're doing more of it, then you may, if you do the 51%, these regs say you have to manage the stormwater on all of it. So that's kind of how you deal with the waiver, by playing with that percentage. You know, you might say, oh, you got to do 90% before you have to, you know, some, something, something greater than 50. That's how I think the waiver would work, because otherwise if, you know, if most of the lots at that size are going to get a waiver, then there's not much point in having the lower acreage.
And is that to your point, that somebody could say, all right, well, instead of developing this brown field that required, would require me to put in all this stormwater infrastructure, I'm going to go to this greenfield because it's.
Oh, absolutely, much easier to, to develop a greenfield, much, much easier to do it, yeah, to make that decision all the time.
And they'd still have to manage the stormwater under that because they're putting in impervious surface, but it's a one-time instead of a retrofit?
Yeah, and there's, and it's, you know, it's a virgin site, it's just, it's just a lot easier to do it, yeah. And that's, and that's my concern is that, you know, we're just going to, that just encourages sprawl and the impacts of sprawl are, you know, ultimately far greater than, you know, encourage people to reuse sites and things like that.
This is in the corridor though that we're talking about, right?
Yeah, but there's some, there's some existing green areas still in the corridor. And that's, that was part of the impetus for doing the form-based code, code in the first place was we were watching that just creep from south of Bay Road, you know, closer and closer to the village, so.
Don, do you have any thoughts on the, this discussion or the sort of benefits of redevelopment versus pushing people?
I've just taken it from the perspective of, of the protection of the natural resources as a goal as opposed to the many issues that get drawn into it. Just trying to raise the question and see if, if we can find some good to come out of it.
It's helpful, thank you.
I think there are some opportunities embedded in the idea that if we had, you know, more time and resources we could look into. In a sense, it's priming the pump for demand for some of these community systems or joint systems that Kate's been talking about. So if more people had to deal with stormwater, then there would be a market for these kind of combined systems. of combined systems. And if we had a way of saying, oh, well, we know how much it's going to cost to build that thing, so maybe you just, you pay into the fee into...
Well, this is where we need a utility, you know, that would help, you know, finesse this so that maybe somebody who could provide stormwater ecosystem function on their large lot for somebody else who might have a hard time, you know, you could mitigate for somebody else.
Just the other point to make, I think urban development probably can benefit from other kinds of processes besides these best management processes and all those filtration technologies that are available that could also be brought to bear to clean the waters and maybe it still doesn't apply with it, the costs, the best management costs.
Well, that was, that, where that idea that I was just mentioning came from because when we were working with the consultant, Amy McCullis, she was looking at soils maps and we learned that there are certain parts of the corridor that, you know, I must, back in when the glacier was moving around, you know, they're just, they're all sand. And those have amazing filtration. And so we were thinking about, well, wow, wouldn't it be great if we could, in those areas, the built form that you would encourage in those areas could be like tall and skinny, you know, so you have a small footprint, you're using as much of that land as possible to infiltrate. And, you know, and that maybe, maybe you could take that a step further and actually leverage that more by, by turning them into very dynamic managers of stormwater on those sites, you know? So, but, but you're, you know, it's not, you're, in doing that, you're moving from, everybody has to do it on their own piece of land, to something that would happen more in a kind of like mini watershed. And that's what we would need a utility for. So it's, that's, that's kind of, to me, that would be, you know, version 2.0. We would, we would work with somebody to develop that. And actually, when we did the meeting at the Vermont Development Conference, I did talk with somebody from the, the, VHB, VHB, the engineering firm, about like, could you do something like this? And, and he thought that there was, you know, it would be very doable. But, you know, once you had these other things in place, the mechanisms in place to enable it. So the problem is it's not something that, you know, it's like not on the state's radar yet. I mean, we'd be really sort of going out there on our own, but...
Is there anything has a, is there anything within the regulations, within the form-based zoning that we could give has a carrot to encourage people to do this instead of sort of as a stick? You know what I mean? Instead of saying, you must do this, you know, if you do this, you get another five units on your property or you get another X many parking places or the parking waiver is way, you know what I mean? Something, I don't know what that is, but...
The higher density that you can have under form-based zoning in itself was seen as the original incentive.
Yeah.
Given that you can do maybe 50% more, sometimes more.
But if, if we look at things from a stormwater perspective, particularly through infiltration, we could make the form-based code even more place-based than it is now, you know? Like the, you really use that to inform where the development goes and, and it, make it more, allow it to be more intensive in those locations. And then maybe conserve some of the other places, like I'm thinking, you know, for example, maybe like a site like, you know, the Volvo dealership or something like that, which is not, it's part of the Green Corridor, it's not expected to ever become this like super dense urban, have urban fabric. But that site could, actually the aspect of it could be sort of enhanced if, if you, if you could develop really beautiful garden, rain, rain, rainwater retention gardens there that could actually become a kind of public amenity, like a park or something, could really improve the streetscape. So it's sort of moving beyond the approach that we see at the Kinney, you know, like just massive, ugly, you know, thing that just soaks up water. So it's, you know, it's a more transect-based approach.
So maybe one way of responding is some form-based zoning doesn't have density, you know? It's the number of units is a function of the design of the buildings, the height restriction and coverage. And there's no, there's no maximum density. So I think that the, the number of units that you can do under form-based zoning building types is already pretty generous. But if you're looking for how you could create more incentives, you could up that number or simply remove the number. But I do think there could start to be some implications from that.
I would be wary of doing that without a fair amount of study on what, what that means for the corridor.
I'm not suggesting we make a decision on that tonight, just to be really clear. Just looking for ideas to...
Yeah. I like the idea of a carrot for it though. And all, I mean, it's all sort of, if we're trying to create a stronger sustainability to the corridor, it's all the pieces, like the stormwater is one piece, but more tree cover, you have, they're just, all the benefits sort of roll together on the environment side. And so we, if we're trying to think of a carrot, we might want to look at a, the bigger sustainability picture as well, for sort of all of that.
Just on the big picture, my thought was Shelburne as a whole, it's the corridor that's developed and that's where you get more of the urban kind of pollutants in the stormwater. So it's an opportunity while you're working on the corridor to try to see what kind of balance it can come to.
Are there any other key issues in the corridor that you would recommend? We look at, are we getting off scope a little here?
Yeah, getting off scope, yes. The only other connection with that might be if there, we've talked before a little bit about development swaps where we're trying to protect an area somewhere in the town, if we can use plots in the corridor to swap development rights.
Yeah. Yeah, I do understand, I completely understand the balancing of the economics and I would be interested more in the numbers because I know that, at least when we got into stormwater discussions, I think it was before the town plan, the numbers that Shelburne was on the hook for over the next few years was lots of millions. And that was a subset of the Chitting County, a lot more millions. And at the end of the day, that's going to be borne by taxpayers who generally don't like it when tax rates go up. So I wonder if there's a way of having an educational aspect to this to say, maybe now is not the time to make that change. I'd be in favor of just saying that stormwater should be a, should be a factor in any kind of development regardless of space, but, but maybe long-term, for whatever time there is, that we have an educational thing that says, this is what we're on the hook for, this is why we're trying to encourage better best practices around stormwater management. And hopefully that draws in the right kinds of development projects that would want to do that.
So something kind of specific, would the commission want to consider having someone take a stab at edits to the default zoning in the mixed-use district so that they had the same requirements? Do you want to try to do that as part of what you would warn for hearing that, the brandy package?
I think that would be terrific to do. And that would incentivize people to use this to the degree that, that stormwater has been singled out by a number of developers for real or imagined reasons, right? It, I mean, what people fear can be a big driver of the decisions that they make. But if we take, if we remove that as a factor by just making the underlying zoning for now, at, you know, something comparable to this in terms of the, what you have to do, I think that'll drive more people to use the form-based zoning.
So in the interest of time, we, I can reach out to Tom Di Pietro in South Burlington and see whether or not as part of his agreement with this town of Shelburne, he could maybe give us some advice on how we could do that and make him, with luck, have something in your next packet or not the one after that.
Yeah, thank you.
That still leaves us with this. Do you want to leave this hanging until we... No, no, I was just thinking, like, closing off this part of it. Can we leave this then to see what we hear back from South Burlington? Or do we need to close it?
Is that all for you, Don, as a, as a strategy? Okay.
Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a great, a great topic, yeah.
Yeah, well, just, it's just because the point of this was to look at the whole corridor and, and, you know, the underlying zoning looks at everything just on a site-by-site basis and that's what we're, that's what we're trying to get away from. Because it's so, it, you know, it's so additive, the impacts that this causes. So I think this is a really great way to address this kind of, almost like a loophole in that, you know, that it's, people have this perception that it's easier on the underlying zoning, oh, I'm just going to do that, you know, so...
Good, good discussion. All right. Well, so then let's skip back to page 38. Think, well, I know we beat parking mostly to death anyway. Is there anything else on that page? Because if not, we could flip to the next page, 39. I just had a comment that in 2205 dash M, the point two there underneath it, that was different from the Redline document, but I imagine that whatever was here takes priority anyway.
It's the more recent.
It's the more recent. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, the language looked fine. I just, it was, just wanted to point that out. And I need to reorient myself, but in 2205 dot 1H, under, around bicycle parking? Under point two, I, I crossed out the last sentence and just said unless the DRB approves an alternative. And I'm trying to figure out why I said that.
Under which?
2205 dot 1H, the bicycle parking, point two, under non-residential uses. I'm saying that non-residential uses must provide following minimal, minimum bike parking spaces. Oh, I guess the, the line saying a single typical inverted U rack or pole rack accommodates two bicycles. I get, I don't know why I crossed that out. But those space considerations, I was wondering if, if it made sense to say unless the DRB approves an alternative.
An alternative type or an alternative number?
Yeah, I, this was probably two weeks ago, sorry. I wasn't sure if by saying that a single typical inverted U rack or pole rack accommodates two bicycles, that that was saying that that's what should be used or just saying that...
I think it's kind of like for example.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, the default regs do require inverted use as the, as the type of space for bicycles as opposed to other types. But that, I think, is a reaction to the old days when people would put in tire vendors, you know, just the racks that you front tire with in.
Right.
Doesn't mean that there aren't other types available now that would be used, but the default zoning regs specify an inverted U.
It feels like that sentence perhaps is, is a definition. I mean, maybe there should be a point four under 2205 one H that just says, a bicycle space shall be considered a single type typical inverted U rack or pole accommodates two bicycles, you know what I mean? Doesn't that apply to all this stuff? Multi-family residential developments, non-residential uses, locations? A definition of a bicycle space is a single typical inverted use rack or pole accommodates two bicycles?
Yeah, I feel like there was somewhere else that talked about the different bike types because you can have the hanging ones that some buildings have inside.
How about if you just say, you know, for outdoor parking spaces or something like that? Because the first, number one refers to a covered space, which I could see people, people, you know, like using hooks or something. Maybe we could clarify that it's outdoor space or something?
Mm-hmm.
So is the issue that it should be dealt with as a definition of what a bike space is? Or is it the amount that's required and that there should be a waiver?
Doesn't three cover the outdoor, sorry, location?
Do we need to tell them how they're supposed to accomplish this? I mean, why do we care?
Well, I think again, there's the reaction, the reason that a lot of zoning regs will specify the type is so that it isn't done on the cheap. It puts bikes on the, you know, considers them a little bit more equitably and says, hey, just as cars have spaces that are paved and smooth ride and all this, someone who rides a bike should have a reasonably good place to attach their bike and lock it, it's secure, it's upright, doesn't get trampled on, run over by trucks and whatever. So that's, that's some of the theory behind it.
Oh, okay.
That it's not making it just an afterthought.
Yeah.
Megan, were you suggesting you go under three?
Well, I was just wondering if three covered the, Kate was saying, I think, to specify that it was outdoor. And location required bicycle spaces may be placed on private property or sidewalk. I guess it doesn't say that it can't be indoors, but all the examples are outdoor. It was a more minor point. But maybe it could go in three.
Yeah, I suppose I, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to suggest a change or anything. I suppose it was just, I was curious that that definition of the racking was in there. Like if it had said for example or something, or are we trying to say that that's what it needs to be?
I imagine, trying to be clear where it, has Dean suggested a bicycle rack somewhere is defined has an inverted U-shaped thing?
In a default.
And then you read this and you say, okay, I need to provide four spaces. Is that four inverted U's or two inverted U's? And so this clarification makes it clear that it's two inverted U's. I'm all good with that.
Yeah.
I don't need to beat this to...
No.
Beat this down.
It can just be.
And I read, when I read through this, I thought that the numbers made sense to me in terms of spaces and square footage and that sort of thing, and I was comfortable with that. I did read the single U, the single, I did read that a couple times. I was like, huh, okay. But then I was okay with it. I think we can be.
So you didn't cross it out like me and then just made your future self wonder what you did that for? Yeah?
Not on this, in this particular instance anyways.
You don't make any change, excuse me.
I don't think so. Or it doesn't sound that way anyway. Okay.
Just leave it.
All right. Anything else on that page?
This is where the inverted U is used.
Yeah, that all works.
Okay.
All right. On page 40, there was a duplicate, the D at the top of the page. It's what my notes says anyway. I apparently don't have the right degree to figure out how to turn pages in this document.
Yeah, well, here, so you're saying that these two are duplicates so we can just compare and see if they're...
They, yes, they are. Yeah. So at the bottom of page 39, 2205 dot 1L, point C is the same as D on the next page. Thank you.
5-1?
You're saying that it's the same as the, you can compare.
Yeah, that'll be great. Side street parking. Yeah, I think she's got it in, so we can clear up space on page 40 by taking out one of them.
And then, further down the page on 40 and .4-D, the fourth line in that, there's a, it says the applicant must file a written guarantee, and then it says must be filed with, and I think must be filed could just get deleted. Unless we really want to make sure people know that it must be filed.
You know, the B, parking spaces dedicated to alternative fuel vehicles, I wonder where the two spaces number came from? Each parking lot structure containing over 100 parking spaces, at least two must be reserved for electric or hybrid vehicles. That number is growing rapidly, you know what I mean? From electric cars running around.
Were you on, I'm sorry, were you on the commission when we'd had a conversation about the model standards that were circulated? I think that must have been just before. That was something that Andrew was interested in. And one of my notes was about incorporating the E-charging. There is, there's DPS, and I'm not sure who else were involved. But, yeah, that number may not be a good number anymore.
Is it based off of some sort of standard, or is it just-
Well, a lot of the things that are in this are from this model, like I was saying. It gets, that model gets updated. I don't know, do you know? 9.2, is that where we are right now with the SMART code? This might be 9, and so by 9.2, it may be 3 or 4, or who knows? But...
This is another one of those things, I think that the societal norms will push developers to include more electric vehicle chargers as more people drive electric vehicles.
And 2% seems low, to your point.
It says at least, so they can do more if they want.
Right.
Which I think people will start to see it as a, you know, a business opportunity.
Right. It's one of those things that you'd like to think it would naturally just be done.
Demand grows for it.
Even this, it just says provide the parking spaces, right? I mean, it doesn't say provide vehicle chargers.
Right. Well, I pulled into a spot the other day at the Shelburne Green, and I was psyched, because there was a spot, and then there was a sign saying it was for low-emitting or EV parkers only. And I thought, all right, that's not me. Yet.
So is there going to be an attempt to tweak the number now?
I just made a note, I'll add this onto the tracker, that we might want to consider that number. I mean, I'd be happy with making it higher, but I don't know that we know, like,
I don't know what that's-
what number, what that number would be.
What's a reasonable number for the number of cars out there?
If anything, just adding language to encourage it, but that's effectively what that says with saying at least two spaces. And I would imagine that developers have an eye on these things as well, and know what tenants would want, and those numbers are increasing.
I think it's okay to leave it for now.
Yeah. All right. So if we go to 41? There's nothing there, and we go into 42. This one just had some typo-type stuff. If we want to just add all these in there to the updated document? So in the first sentence, section 22-2 dot 4-F reference, the following standards says will apply to drive-through facilities, and I think we could probably get rid of the word "will."
And will, what was that, the number?
Just .5 on page 42. Just the first sentence. Just to say that-
The drive-throughs, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it just says this following standards will apply, and I think it'd be fair to just say the following standards apply, unless somebody else has a different read on that. Some of these are obvious, others I'm not, like, these are more suggested, I'm not saying it has to be.
In .6, we cut that 700 feet.
And that was the other place I had in mind, what I mentioned earlier.
So should this just align with the numbers we had used before?
1,500.
1,250, 1,500?
Right, 700, if you wanted to match it, would match with the 1,500.
It works.
I like consistency.
Prior to that, in 5, though, in point D, there's a space between the word, well, in the word "drive-through," it's drive dash space through.
Say, what was that?
5D. Just the word "drive-through" has an extra space in it. Wow, we're good. Yeah, and this one just had some, just observations. I think in some places, we refer to character districts with lowercase, and other places, it's uppercase. And I think this same thing in 2205 dot 2B with certificate of occupancy. And I'm happy to leave them capitalized, we just might want to check to make sure we're consistent. Unless I was just doodling on the page and circling capital letters for no reason. In 2205 dot 2D, .3, the last sentence says hedges or shrubs planted along the front or side street yard property line must not exceed a height of four feet, except when abutting in a protected district? And, I don't want to sound ignorant, is residential protected?
Yes.
Okay. So for a non-residential lot, they are not allowed to have hedges or shrubs that exceed four feet? Oh, unless it's abutting up, okay. Okay. Strike my comment, then. Any other thoughts on that page? Okay. It also seems like we have requirements for deciduous trees, but in terms of minimum caliper, but not for evergreen? I didn't know if that was by design.
It's typical, the measure, measure conifers differently.
Oh, so the deciduous is caliper?
Caliper.
Evergreen is height, I see that, okay. And Andrew was here, I'd pushed for Oxford commas, but I suppose that those are common to be inconsistent. Bio-retention area, that, an example of that would be a rain garden, or could be a rain garden, right? In the center of that page, under point D, Terminal Islands, sub-point V, there's a phrase for the, let's see, planted in a pattern that does not inhibit visibility pedestrians?
Oh.
It's either pedestrian visibility, or...
Visibility of pedestrians?
Yeah, that's what I think it should be. Or by.
Yeah.
Isn't it pedestrians being visible to the cars? The visibility of this?
That, yeah, it will-
But both ways, I think. You know, you don't want someone stepping out into-
Yeah, in front of a car.
Will not inhibit visibility to pedestrians and those driving cars.
There you go.
Two.
Two.
Two is the missing incentive. Missing incentive, okay.
I might just need to say this out loud to think it through, but the next one for alternative design, point E, sub-point 2, Terminal Islands are not less than 12 feet in any dimension. So a terminal island, we're talking about the, like, an island in a parking lot, right?
At the end, yeah.
At the end. So usually, well, I don't want to say usually. To me, it strikes me that a 12-foot width at the end seems bigger than, like, 12 feet wide kind of makes sense, because you're, that's the length of the parking spaces, or space. But to have it 12 feet deep, does that get into limiting space? Or are we saying this is a good thing, because that's where you'd have greenery and stuff, and we want more of that?
I think, I think it's a reference to, it retains its functionality as a bio-retention facility, if it's-
If it's a big enough size, yeah.
It's a fancy way of saying it's got to be big enough to do it.
Okay.
And this is the metric that seems to make sense.
Okay.
When I was reading this page, I thought, this is where I'm going to ask about a list of acronyms. Is there a list of acronyms somewhere? For this, for this document? I didn't see one in the original piece.
The acronym that's the official is the Shelburne Road Form-Based Overlay Distance. It's the F, S, F, F, B, O, D? It's a real pain in the- And I'm-
And I searched around for that, and I found it, but then I got stuck on LID, and it took me quite a while to trace down LID.
Low impact development.
Yep, I got that now.
So basically, we should have a, yeah.
Well-
It feels like there's a lot of acronyms around.
She was-
Yeah, low-impact development, the acronym's in parentheses, but it doesn't help if you only have, yeah.
Right, I think usually, the first time it's mentioned in the document, it's spelled out, but, yeah, not helpful if you're-
In a document like this, where, you know, you're going back and forth and looking at specific sections, I mean,
People with rebus cover the cover?
This isn't a document that people would be covered in. Generally speaking.
We have.
I think that would be a useful thing to have a list of.
Everywhere where it's like, at a header, like, where, like, for example, in 2F, 2F, 2-sub-B, where it says LID practices just to have low-income, low-income, low- Low-impact.
Exactly.
You know where I've been. My head has been this past day.
So we'll spell that out.
And it is development, not design?
Low-impact.
Develop.
Design.
Yeah, low-impact, well, it can be low-impact development, or low-impact design, I mean, can be both, actually.
It's development, well, in the back. Low-impact development is LID.
We'll stick with development, yeah.
Okay. Dean, were you noodling on something in the middle of the page? Or are you doing?
In the middle, no, I was just making it, marking it down as a to-do to add to this PDF document. I am personally just a little struggling with the diction of not inhibit visibility to pedestrians, but that's a stylistic thing, so. But if that's where you were, that's the note I made to make the edit, and you'll see it. People want to change it later, you can.
Yeah, well, I was at pedestrian visibility, but I guess it depends on what it is that we're trying to-
Why would you say pedestrian visibility? That's, you know, we get rid of the two.
But even, is that what they're trying to say? I mean, basically, it's just you don't want it to inhibit visibility, period, but to anyone involved.
It's really true.
Where four pedestrians and those driving vehicles, would that work?
What about people on bikes? Scooters.
So not inhibit, not inhibit visibility of and by pedestrians and those driving. And so if you say of, it's when they're being seen, and by, it's when they're seeing, and then you do it.
That covers the waterfront, I think.
That works, too.
It's not inhibit visibility in a way that endangers people.
Visibility of and by pedestrians and those driving vehicles.
Of and by, and both. Bicycles, you're on your own.
I'm just thinking, what we would be in for if Ann Hogan was still on the planning commission.
I know.
Another, another couple hours on that.
No, she would have probably given me a marked-up version.
Oh, right, yeah.
And I would have, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. And it would be totally correct, too.
She was good like that, for sure. On general provisions, on the right side of page 43, point 2, under fence, point B, says no fence or wall may be located within any required drainage or utility easement. Just when I read that, I was thinking, isn't that something that could be, I mean, it could be designed to accommodate, or? I, I'll just point out that I feel like that is something that would generate some kind of discussion at some point in the future. But it doesn't need to be changed now.
The only comment I could make quickly is that if there's a utility easement, and if it's something that's owned by the water department, they hate it when there are things in their easement. It's a reminder, if nothing else.
Right.
Because they, you know, they have the right to tell people, we tore it out because we had to get to the line, it's up to you to fix it, but they'd much rather it not be there in the first place.
Which makes sense, and I guess if somebody has a problem with that, they would challenge, and that would bring out the whole reasons why.
Well, I see what you're saying, though, I mean, it's kind of like a very suburban standard, because it assumes massive amounts of land, you know, like, you know, so it's how we get this locational inefficiency that is just the bane of our existence. You know, how big is the easement, you know, maybe? It just doesn't, it doesn't encourage efficiency, efficient use of land, you know, in a tight, tight lot.
And I imagine if there's a conflict, that's the sort of thing that would be brought up in the designer review, anyway, or something.
Yeah, I would hope so. It would be some way to manage that. Because you're right, I mean, you can have, you can have a wall and have, you know, a tiny little, you know, some kind of a rail or something that's cut in that directs drainage away.
Right.
And they do that all the time in tight, you know, settings. And, and, you know, you don't have to have, like, you know, 20 feet, you know? Unimpacted on either side, or something. Yeah, then you're pretty much, you're, you know, that's how we get more of this, just what we don't want to have out there.
Yeah. And we are a page away from where we got to with Don. I would just say, depending on how we feel about time, and if we wanted to do any discussion, I think the tree space design that was included in the packet was great. I didn't know if there was any discussion that we wanted to have around it. Just trying to gauge what wrap-up looks like. that we wanted to have around it, just trying to gauge what wrap-up looks like.
Did you make any change on the fence?
No.
No. So I think, Dean, for other business, it would just be, just minor announcements, right? Not that we need to do it now, I just...
Yeah.
There is no time-consuming thing. Do we want to just, do we want to try and get to where we were with Dawn, so that that could be our drop-off point, or do we just want to start wrapping up?
You're not far.
Um, yeah, we're inch and a half away. All right, let's try and make this quick, then. Roof-mounted equipment, I wasn't sure if there was a definition for that or not. The fact that I wrote it, I hope that I looked it up in the definitions and it wasn't there. But saying that it must be screened from ground-level view, just curious what that means. Does that mean that anything on a roof can't be seen from the ground, or adjacent public street right-of-way? I understand the principle.
And we've, this has come up before, I, at least, it's sounding very familiar, so is there an edit that it could be, that could be made?
Well, to me, and this, this kind of ties into our solar sighting thing, where I think it can't be seen from adjacent roads and that sort of thing, and that, that's a big deal, and solar panels on the roof of a building are, generally can be seen from other vantage points, and I was just wondering how far that would be taken.
Would that include solar panels?
So that was the first question for the definition, I think that it...
Yeah, I'm assuming that it would.
It's roof-mounted, I'm losing my...
Right here, I'm going to just make a note to you as a...
And, and I think some of, some of this may be answered by the question of, you know, enclosures, because the equipment, in many cases, will be in an enclosure, and if it's, if it's in an enclosure, it's screened, it's not, you're not seeing it.
When I read that, I think roof-mounted equipment, I think HVAC equipment, you know, rooftop, rooftop unit. Peter, air conditioner.
And that may be the intent, there have been some very tedious discussions around...
Aside from solar panels, are there, is there other rooftop equipment that, other than HVAC, that might be?
Well, it'd be principally...
Technically, I guess you could have the elevator things.
Elevator shaft, yeah.
Well, could we say with the exception of solar panels?
Or like, or even...
Or if that's not in the definition?
Or a...
Well, there, I think there is maybe another section on solar that, that addresses that, but...
So, so then it wouldn't fall under this?
I'm not, I'm not certain.
I had, honestly, when I read this, I, I was thinking of HVAC, I wasn't thinking of solar panels.
Yeah.
As roof-mounted equipment, but that might be me, not a definitional thing, it just...
Say roof-mounted HVAC equipment?
That's what I was thinking, that's exactly what I was thinking, just throw HVAC into that.
That's the tip of the thing.
I cannot claim to know if there are other roof-mounted equipments or not, HVAC is the only one that I thought of, but that does not, I, um, it's not a...
Well, how about I make a note of that, and I'll add that into our tracker thing of points to come back to? Uh, in the next one, point three, well, for one, wall-mounted has a space in it in both A and B, but I had a note saying that sounded contradictory. Yeah, it just kind of struck me as contradictory that, that wall-mounted equipment can't be located on any surface that directly faces a public right-of-way, but then, that it also can't be seen from a public right-of-way.
So just delete A?
Yeah. But if it's on a, and if it directly faces a public right-of-way, and it needs to be screened by landscaping or an epic screen, I guess that, that works.
So, I'm sorry, so what is the edit you're suggesting?
Just getting her...
So you're, you're basically saying that you can have it on a public, it can face a public right-of-way?
It just can't be seen.
Well, but you're gonna...
That's what B says.
Yeah, B says it can't be seen...
It would be screened.
From a side.
So A says, you can't have it facing a public right-of-way, and...
You can't see it.
And if, and if somehow you happen to, it can't be seen.
Well, but Dean...
No, but it's visible and being on the public right-of-way are different.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, think of facades, if you don't, you don't want that equipment as a car bunker on the front of the building, say, you can't have it, there's a, and then, oh, if it's going to be on the side where it will need to be, if it can't be on the front, it's got to be screened.
I think it's okay.
Cool. Yeah, I think the ground-mounted equipment is questionable as well, but I'm looking through the lens of our views on solar panels.
But it mentions solar arrays.
Huh, ground-mounted mechanics might include in solar arrays.
Oh, yeah.
Visible from a public right-of-way, not including an alley, must be screened from view by landscaping. I think that's kind of, it's like an old-fashioned sort of mentality, don't you think, this day and age? What, we're supposed to be celebrating all this? Besides all these, um, you know, I think these parking lots that are all greened up and everything could be perfect places to stick up a couple of solar arrays, you know? Have them do double duty.
Well, solar won't be effective, I think.
Maybe you just have to remember, Public Service Board of reviewed projects aren't going to have to meet any zoning.
Only if they tighten the grid.
So the fact, so then it shouldn't even say including solar arrays, because it wouldn't apply?
I, I, I have felt that, but I'm not sure that if, it would be net metered, which most likely it would be, zoning can't touch it, but if someone would have one that's not net metered, then, you know, it would be subject to the regs potentially, but...
Yeah. So we just want to take out including solar arrays if we're not concerned about them being screened anyway?
But what if, what if somebody had one that powered all of their, I don't know, something, signs, or like, you know, smart windows, or something like, I don't know, I'm just making stuff up, but some, that wasn't tied to the grid, just was a local thing. We're, we're saying that, you know, if it's net metered, it, it's, you know, we don't have any control over it, but if it is net metered, if it's not net metered, it has to be screened, yeah.
Zoning could apply if you wanted it to.
Yeah, which would make it sort of probably ineffective as a functioning solar facility, right? Because it would have to be screened, which is the whole point that, anyway. I, I think just take out the, in this day and age, I think just take out the solar thing. I would suggest that, including solar arrays.
I'd be good with that as well.
What you don't want are those, you know, those dumb utility boxes, that they just, you know, that look like they just threw them there, you know, they're always like crooked, and, and, you know.
They don't know what they're doing. All right. So, twenty-two oh five dot two I, um, I was curious about number nine, chain-link fences are not allowed on in-front or side-street setbacks, but I'm guessing rear is okay? Even though that could also be a, abutting a street?
Um, so, front or side-street setback?
Just struck me as odd.
Yeah, I mean, so the, if you think about... Yeah, it's, it's on the street side, basically, a non-street side would be okay.
Okay, oh, right, because side-street could be behind the building too, accidentally.
Yep, I guess it could...
As long as that applies.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a through lot, um, and I think the basic idea is chain-link fences on the side of a building that's along a street are prohibited, and most times, that'll be on a corner, if it's a corner lot, rather than a through lot.
Okay. Twenty-two oh five dot two K, utilities and services, it says that existing above-ground utility lines and poles must be buried. I don't know that we need to bury the poles necessarily, unless that's a, uh... Sorry, folks, got an additional charge for you on this project.
A vertical pole must be buried. Get your auger out.
And then, that brings us to the page where we were with Dawn, so we could just pick up there next time.
So I had need to have you go back to the chain-link fence, did you relook right that language in there? You did change that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it still strikes me that you, I mean, you could, so if there isn't a road, but you have a property being divided, that you could still have a chain-link fence.
Sure, but I didn't know if you had made a change.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
And how about with the buried poles?
Uh, just get rid of and poles.
And poles, okay.
Well, unless we want to see how closely people are paying attention, which, that could be funny.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you use the mic, just so we, just grab the mic?
Susan Baldwin, um, question, um... You know, Dean clarified for me that this regulating plan does cover the disappearance of that road, and whereas this casual sketch is still in progress. But my question is, the dates on this, both of these have effective date eighteenth of May, 2016. It seems to me that May, the eighteenth of May in 2016, the road was still on here, so that, I'm not sure what the effective date refers to, or is, and my, and my real question is, does this mean this is now effective?
No.
Oh, okay, so it still has to be voted on.
Yeah, the date has just carried over from an earlier version, she edited the document in the, in the main part of the image, but she hadn't done everything. So if this goes through, then in the final edited version, the date of, the effective date will be reflected, depending on when it's adopted, but it isn't in effect yet, no.
Sure.
Right.
All right, so next time, we'll start with twenty-two oh five three D.
So we're starting a stormwater management.
Yeah. So that will be where we go, and that can, unless there are any other comments around form-based zoning, we can wrap up and move on to other business. All right? So, other business, the updating of the public works?
Yeah, that's something that I'm just going to continue to update the planning commission and other committees on as work progresses, there's a group of folks that meet, basically, every other Wednesday to talk about development applications, and we're also working on the public work specifications, the town's plan, the new town plan, has several statements in it that talk about making revisions to the public work specs that are, in a sense, making it more balanced. I've got links to the document, if you don't have them, I can send those out so that you can track the work as it's going on. I think I can just leave it, leave it at that unless people have questions. Is, the work that's being done is using the south, I'm sorry, using the Essex Town specifications as the model, but with the exception of the transportation section, which is using the existing requirements, because Paul Goodrich, the highway department head, doesn't really think that they need to be changed.
That was which, which section?
On transportation, the highways, the highways piece, basically, I should say.
Okay. All right.
Going on to comprehensive plan fixes?
Mm-hmm.
Just let people know that I've been working with Pam Rangan at the Regional Planning Commission, she's, she has been working on that, this would include the edit to the area near Vermont Teddy Bear. There are also a couple of other locations where the same kind of issue happened, where it's a lot that has, say, a duplex on it, and on the tax map, the land around the buildings is listed as condo land, and that designation was treated as association land, and it's too bad Dawn's not still here, and things that were classified as association lands were thrown into that green category, so my point is just that there are a couple of little lots in weird places around town that I will also be showing you as, or suggesting as changing.
Okay.
But Pam has done a lot, and thankful for her for that.
Yeah, thanks to Pam for all of the work she's doing.
There was one other thing, if you can hold off mentioning the article, the vacancy of the, of the planning commission and possible additional vacancy, or when we lose Andrew, I reached out to Lisa Scalotti at the newspaper to say, basically, would any of the kids in this community new service program be interested? And she said, well, actually, it's bad timing, there's, some of them are wrapping up, there will be some continuing, but she is interested in the possibility of an article that would just mention the fact that we have openings on the planning commission.
Great.
And I got that email today, and I can forward it to you, Jason, she was asking a little bit about what might be the best timing.
The next paper that goes out?
She couldn't do it that quick, like she said...
Yeah.
When is Andrew leaving?
Well...
I think he said this month, like...
I know, but he, he acts himself out of the...
The last two meetings, yeah, so I think he's in that short timer.
Unless, yeah, I mean, he'll come back for one, make an appearance, uh...
Maybe, yeah, I don't know.
Start his teaching job, too.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so basically, we're definitely looking for definitely one, and shortly thereafter, a second one to fill. Uh, and I would also say that the, or are you, were you good with that? All right. I would say that the energy group, we met last night, we are going to meet the first Wednesdays of the month, there were three people, including myself, so that would also be something that if anybody is aware of anyone interested in those types of topics, to, to please join.
Do you mind just sending me the agenda?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's that formal, but...
Agenda, yeah, it's a group, it's not a subcommittee, so it's pretty informal now.
Any sort of sense of what they'll be talking about is fine.
Yeah, and I will do that, and anyone who's interested, I'll just, my, my idea is that I'll just send an email after the meeting to whoever wants to see it, and there's a spreadsheet that, just tracking what we talk about. And last night, we basically went through the, the recommended actions in the town plan for the energy section, and prioritized them, we ranked them from one being high, three being low, for priority and timeline. So the ones that have a one for timeline and a one for priority get it done, are the ones that we would focus on in discussions with the select board, if it comes to that.
You don't have to go to any extra trouble, just whatever you have.
Oh, yeah, no, I actually, you know, I, I have a list of people to put on the email, and I had your name on that list, I just realized that you're not on the email, so I will do that. And then, there is a meeting, I think, mentioned earlier, with, um, Lee, Dean, Jerry, and myself tomorrow, just to talk about how we're going to figure out priorities from the town plan, and how that percolates to where it needs to percolate. So if you have any ideas about that as you're thinking, feel free to shoot me a note or whatever, and as, as those meetings start bearing fruit, then I'll bring that into the planning commission, and we can discuss it as a group. Anything else? All right, well, I think, take a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved?
Moved by Kate.
I'll second.
Seconded by Megan, all in favor?
Hi. So Jason, I have to say that when I, you know, when you mentioned those extra spaces in drive-through, that I have a friend who's been, spending the last 10 years writing a book on the Civil War, he's a his, he's a history teacher, but he loves Civil War history, and he's got a book, he's looking at the galley proofs right now, and he's like checking every little thing, and I was thinking to myself, I should have had him send it to you, and a side gig, as a book reader. Are you interested in the Civil War? Do you mind?
Sure, why not? Do the side gig.